Okay. Welcome to tonight's workshop for Thursday, January 23rd. May I please have the attendance? Mrs. Durkin, here. Mrs. Giptos.
Here.
Dr. Gill.
Here.
Ms. Casalonis.
Here.
Ms. Layton.
Here.
Mrs. Seither.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Ms. Caldwell.
Here.
And Mr. Bennett.
Here.
And if you'd join me for the Budge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, very excited about tonight's workshop. We are going to have a presentation regarding renewable energy, the Renewable Energy Consortium for Cost Savings on District Electricity. And Todd, if you'd like to introduce our guest.
Great. Thank you for taking the time to listen to this. We've been, the school department's been working with Competitive Energy for several years now, and Charlie Agnew is our representative. They help us procure utilities, gas, electric, and heating oil. And for years, as Kate will be my witness, I've been trying to find a way to make renewable energy an affordable, cost-saving measure for the school department. As a quick overview, we spend more than half a million dollars on electricity alone for the whole district every year. And the folks at Competitive Energy have helped us procure the best pricing at the right time, which is always key. And recently, with new legislation at the state level, it allows for larger solar projects or renewable energy projects. And Charlie is here to present an opportunity for the school department to join a consortium group of people participating in a large variety of projects, mostly solar but some hydro, which could yield significant savings for us. So, I will introduce Charlie Agnew. There's a lot more than I do about this stuff.
And it's been five years that we've been working together. Most of these years, I've been explaining to Todd why solar does not work financially. That's been kind of our focus. But, you know, as of last June, we had some legislation that passed in the state of Maine that did change that economic or financial picture pretty dramatically. And so, we've been talking about it. That came right up as soon as some of these bills, a couple of bills were passed last spring. And internally, at Competitive Energy Services, we represent, I think, close to 375 or so institutions in the state of Maine, public and private, large and small, you know, school districts, municipalities, you know, the LL Beans, the University of Maine system, you know, Hannaford Brothers, Pratt &amp; Whitney, you know, a diverse group of customers who we immediately polled to see who is interested in essentially going out to market and finding what sort of cost it would take to develop solar in the state of Maine and compare that up against what the, essentially the value of that solar that a customer like the Scarborough Schools or anyone else could extract from these projects under the new legislation. So, kind of at a high level, we grouped together two dozen of our key clients. Some of those I've already mentioned. We went out to bid on behalf of this group for close to 300,000 megawatt hours per year of electric load. And that's essentially the process that I plan to describe tonight, what we've done for due diligence to get to the point where we're at, the timeline going forward, and what we are expecting from all the participants in that RFP process, which I'll refer to as the consortium of participants. And we can talk through some of the economic, environmental benefits and answer any questions you guys have if that sounds good. And plan to wrap by the hour, I guess, so a little bit before then. So, this usually takes me about an hour, so I'm going to go a little quick and just need you guys to stop me to, uh, just stop me to ask any questions or any clarifications. But it might be helpful just to summarize, like, what we're looking, or what sort of relationship the school district would be entering into if you do decide to move forward with a solar project, just to outline the general structure of that. First of all, we do not expect any capital outlay, first and foremost. This agreement structure that we are seeking with a number of different solar developers is one where you will contract for the output of roughly 25 different solar and hydro facilities and essentially receive monetary credits from the utility. So, Central Maine Power will issue you a line item credit for the production from these hydro and solar facilities. And then, the school district would pay back the developer for those credits that were received on the Central Maine Power bills. So, that's an important kind of relationship to hammer home here. So, essentially, you enter a long-term contract with the developer to buy the output from the facility. They use that contract to finance, construct, and then operate and own the solar or hydro facility for a 20-year period. These projects are going to get built all throughout the state of Maine. And through your participation, you will receive credits, dollar value credits on the utility bill and then pay a portion of that back to the developer. So, let's, just wanted to make sure we answered any questions.
So, just to clarify, when you talk about building solar or hydro, are you talking about that, like, in some random place in Maine or, like, in our district?
Yep, that's an important point. So, this, these projects are not going to be built in Scarborough. None of the projects that we've selected, and I'll get into the details of where we are with this process, but none of them will be on school properties. None of them will be, I don't think, in the Scarborough area. But they will be within Central Maine Power service territory. That's...
So, we're getting credit for somebody else using the solar power? Because I don't understand that, I guess.
Yep. Yeah, you're, you know, physically, you will be, you know, physically accepting none of the actual solar. I mean, you think of the electric grid as one where you have solar and hydro and biomass and coal and nuclear energy. It all goes onto the grid.
Right.
You, you take whatever comes off of the grid at your meter here. This is, in essence, a paper agreement to receive credits on your utility bill. And you will also be receiving the environmental attributes from these projects. You will, you will own those. But you will not take physical delivery of the electrons. Okay, so, just to give an overview of the consortium, who's in it, I'll run down this list just to give you a sense. Some of the other school departments are Auburn Public Schools, Falmouth, Portland, through the city of Portland, obviously Wyndham Rain, Scarborough. Those are, well, actually, yeah, those are the limits of the public schools that are in here. Some of the other highlights are Bowden, Colby Colleges, City of Portland, Hussin University, LL Bean, Maine Community College System, Maine General, Maine Maritime Academy, Nestle Waters, New Balance, Portland Water District, Pratt &amp; Whitney, Pride Sports, Jackson Laboratory, and the University of Maine system, just to give you a sense of who the other partners are on this project. And the value here, all, some of this will come up a little bit later, but Scarborough Schools are not out on your own here. And everyone else is following the same process and will receive essentially the same projects that the Scarborough Schools will receive. So, what we saw value in is putting together a large group that could go out and get the best prices and best projects in the marketplace. And we think we can. This RFP for the consortium went out in September. We got all our bids back on Halloween. We spent a couple of months going back and forth on some of the legal language in the actual contractual agreements with both the participants. That is Scarborough Schools and attorneys representing your interests, as well as everyone else, all the other participants in the consortium. We have gotten to a point where we now have a draft 20-year contract that everyone in the participants has reviewed. All of the developers have reviewed, and although one has approved that contract. So, we are very close to a point right now where we will have executable agreements with the developers for the participants to sign in the next couple of weeks. What we asked for in this RFP was to, first of all, to own their environmental attributes. These are, environmental attributes or renewable energy credits are generated by these facilities, by these solar and hydro facilities. And they have a couple of different pieces of value. One, you can retire them and own those credits and count them against your carbon inventory. They also have value in the marketplace where you could go out and sell those credits and increase project revenue through your participation in this, in this process. The Scarborough Schools will own those credits, at least initially, and have your own discretion as to whether you own them or sell them for additional revenue. The rates that we ask for, bids from these developers, are a fixed price without an escalator for 20 years. So, essentially, that price is going to be based on the kilowatt hour production. Kilowatt hours are a unit of electricity measurement. And for every kilowatt hour that gets generated, you will have a fixed-price contract for the 20 years of that agreement with each one of these projects that we'll ultimately select. Just to give you a sense of, you know, when these projects are expected to be built, we did have the ability to pick through 110 different projects that were proposed, which was way more than we needed to fulfill the needs of our consortium. So, we've been able to pick essentially what we want out of the group of proposals, which is a good thing, you know, primarily based on price. But there are others, there are other kind of aspects to the stage of development that we're evaluating. And this chart in front of you just goes to show some of the developers on the left-hand side, and then, when we expect these projects to begin operating. You know, none of them are, none of the, none of the solar projects are built today. They will need contracts from you all in order to finance and begin construction. And the majority of these projects are expected to be built in the latter part of 2020. We did also mention that there are some hydro projects that would be contracted with, in this, in this project. And those are already operating, existing facilities. So, as soon as the agreements are signed, the school district would be receiving credits from those hydro facilities. But the majority of the solar projects are at least about a year out before they'll be generated. So, this is, just to give you kind of a, some geographic representation of where each of these projects was proposed. I'm going to skip through this just because it's a bit of time here. Overall, the results of this process were, in our opinion, favorable and as we expected. Nothing surprising there. We've done quite a bit of due diligence in the past two months on the, on the developers that we've focused in on. And that is roughly six or seven different developers who will be building approximately 25 different projects. One thing to note here is that I mentioned every one of the participants in the consortium is going to be getting the same thing as the other. The Scarborough Schools will own a percent share of 25 different projects. You will not own output from a single facility. We've made this, it is going to be somewhat administratively complex. However, we think there's good reason to diversify your ownership across 25 different projects and technologies, hydro and solar. And ultimately, you're going to own a percent share of each of those projects and their output. So, just to give you a sense of how that, how that relationship is going to work. So, I'm just going to keep phrasing through here. Any questions?
Yeah, like, a lot of them.
I have a lot of questions. You too. You might want to save them till then.
I'm writing down vocabulary words that I...
Should we pause for a couple of questions?
What's the, what were the statutory changes that allowed this to occur?
I'll get to that.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, just to tag along on that, my question, which I'm sure you'll also get to, is, what if they change back?
Yep, I'll get to that.
Okay. And then, what about, like, so, right now, you're saying that the projects that you have lined up are sufficient to fill 100% of the load in the consortium, but like, you're looking to add us to the, oh, wait, we're already in it?
You're already in.
Okay, never mind. So, you're not adding members?
We are, we have to sign in the contract.
Right, but we're like, okay. And then, what, if we own a percentage of all of these projects and everybody else does, like, what happens if there's like a natural disaster and something is destroyed?
Yep, I'll get to that, too.
Okay.
And what happens if the energy suppliers change? So, you're mentioning AMERA and CMP. What if they decide to pull out of, in either direction, decide to pull out of the state of Maine?
Yeah. Okay, so, let me, let me tackle that one. That's not really in the presentation. The, these are our electric, these are our investor-owned utilities. AMERA, which is in the Bangor area, north and east. And then, Central Maine Power, which is our, are the electric utility in the majority of southern Maine and central Maine. In, in terms of, I'm not sure what you mean by pulling out. There's, we, you mean, like, no more electricity delivered in the state of Maine?
Not saying there's no more electricity, but what if Central Maine Power...
Gets bought?
Gets bought.
What happens if they say, you know, "We're out of this business,"
and somebody else takes over for them?
No change expected.
Okay.
The, anyone that bought this regulated utility would be on, have to operate it under the same rules that they are now, under the oversight of the Public Utilities Commission. This is a regulated public utility.
I want to make sure.
Yep.
And then, you had mentioned about the multiple projects and then the management, that it would be complicated to manage.
Yep.
Who owns the management of that? Is that something that we take on? And would we need additional resources to help support 20 various projects?
Under the agreement that we have with the Scarborough Schools, we are going to be doing all that administration.
Okay.
What, what is your, what is your company? Is it a...
Like, how do you make money?
Yeah, we're, we're a consulting company.
No, I mean, seriously.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, that's a good question, so, just... So, yeah, we are not, not a non-for-profit. We...
Wait, you are not a non-for-profit?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we are a for-profit company. Yeah, there. Um, so... I might have confused myself. So, yeah, in, in this arrangement, we came to Todd and said, "Here's, here's, here's our offer to support you guys with this, or under this new legislation. We'll do a bunch of work upfront, which will be running an RFP process and including the Scarborough Schools in that. We will assist in negotiating the contracts with these developers, getting you to a point of execution of one of these contracts for no upfront costs." So, everything that we've done since September, essentially till now, is, you know, free. You guys then have the choice to enter into one of these 20-year and energy billing credit agreements. And what, the way we've structured our fee is a revenue share of the savings that you retain over the life of this project. And that depends on your commitment level. But I, I think we're at, I think we're at a 10% revenue share, right? So, if you guys save $100,000 in a year, we, we take $10,000 per year.
What do you base the savings comparison from?
Yep, yeah, so, I'll get that, get to that. I mean, that, it's, it's actually just plain and simple, like, net savings from this program. And I'll explain how that works. But for that work and over the course of the 20 years, we are also going to audit every one of your utility invoices. I mentioned these credits are going to flow through the utility invoices. You're also going to receive invoices from the developers, where you have to write a check to them for the production from these facilities. We are going to audit that whole process to make sure that you're being charged correctly and credited correctly. And do all that administration for the 20 years.
And what, is this all your, what else is your company responsible for other than this consortium?
Yeah, so, th- this is, in addition to this work, as Todd described, we help with strategic energy procurement for the district. So, we help, we, we go out to bid. We, through a competitive bidding process, source electricity supply, natural gas supply, and a small bit of heating oil supply for the district. So, procurement, energy procurement. And then, I'll get to some of your questions.
Stop staring at him.
I'm going to jump into kind of the legislation piece here, which was essentially the signing of this bill, LD 1711, which updates the net energy billing credits program. Net energy billing under LD 1711 essentially establishes a, a rate of compensation for any renewable energy system that puts electricity onto the grid. So, this is, the distinction to make is, it's, this is not what we say behind the meter. It's not energy that's being produced on-site. This is energy that goes directly onto the grid that you own, in essence. And this legislation creates a value for that electricity that, you know, is, is high. It's, it's very valuable, the way the legislation was written. And that's, in essence, what we're taking advantage of here. So, that legislation basically defines the value of energy put onto the grid at 75% of a small general service customer's delivery charges, plus all of the standard offer supply charges. And, you know, just for, just so you're aware, that, that value is about 13 cents per kilowatt hour right now. So, any electricity that gets put onto the grid from a renewable energy system that qualifies under energy... under energy billing produces credits at 13 cents a kilowatt. So that is the piece of legislation that's changed around. I'm not sure this, I'm not, I don't have a good flow to these slides, but here we are, here we are here on slide 13. And so just to reiterate, this, the credit under net energy billing and this new legislation will be indexed to the price of electricity. And there are two com, two components to the price of electricity. One is the delivery component, which is what you pay to Central Maine Power. The other component is the supply cost, which is the actual cost of the electrons. And the credit rate is indexed to those two cost components of electricity under this legislation. That credit rate is going to change every year, but in December, it's been established for 2020. And what you see up here, you know, under the CMP column, is the credit rates that you would receive for each of your different accounts. And you have a mix of, you know, you have two large, two what are considered large accounts, Wentworth and the high school, and then you have some medium and some small accounts as well. So overall, the credits that you receive from these facilities are, are expected to be in 2020, or would be 13 cents a kilowatt.
So that's what we're getting back?
That's what you get issued for every kilowatt hour generated from the systems, the projects. You will receive a credit. You know, if it's 100,000 kilowatt hours in a year, you would receive $13,000 in credits on your utility.
And then how much do you anticipate then paying?
Yep.
For the, to the project owners?
Good question. So we have 25 different projects. Pricing on average will be somewhere in the low eight cent range. So for every kilowatt hour generated, those 100,000 kilowatt hours, let's say it's eight cents, you will pay back the developers $8,000. So you're receiving $13,000 in utility credits, you pay back $8,000 to the developer, and you retain $5,000 as your savings. And that goes back to your question about how are you, how are we gonna count that? It's as simple as that.
And then, but then, 10% from that?
So, right, our fee would be pulled out of that amount, yeah.
Out of the savings amount, or out of?
Just the $5,000.
Right. So what do, what would a utility bill look like?
Your uti, so that's a great question.
Because we still have to pay CMP for our power.
You are. All of your utility bills essentially will have all the same line items that are on there now. The only difference is there's gonna be, let's say it's a $13,000 credit. So what you pay to Central Maine Power is gonna drop nearly to, I mean, it's gonna drop by 60 or 70% what you actually paid to the utility. Then you're gonna have this other, you know, payment due to the solar developers.
Right.
Yep.
Who sets the credit rate and how does that vary? What are the factors that cause that to vary?
Yep, that's a great question. So I'll just read, and, and the answer is in the, in this slide that's in front of us here. But the credit rate is going to be established by the Public Utilities Commission. And the credit is based on the CMP charge for a small general service customer. This is a, like a, a commercial account rate class that, you know, this is somewhat arbitrary, but it's 75% of the cost of the delivery charges for a small general service customer of CMP. It is completely arbitrary, but this is what it is. 75% of the delivery costs, plus all of the supply charges for the standard offer customer.
So.
And I'm explaining this, but you, you may not know what standard offer is, you know? This is essentially the default supply rate for any customer that is not in the third-party supply market. So if you pay a utility, if you pay a bill to Central Maine Power, there's going to be standard offer supply charges on the third page of that bill. That's for residential customer, customers that are not in the third-party market. They get the default rate for electricity supply. And this credit rate is indexed to that default rate.
And that rate would change if you affiliated with something like Efficiency Maine, right? Because doesn't, doesn't that change from the standard?
No.
Well, the rate, your rate would.
So I follow where you're going with this.
Sure.
But since the school department is contracted with a third-party supplier, your actual cost or liability to Central Maine Power is going to change. However, this is independent of that. You're gonna pay, you're gonna continue to pay all your Central Maine Power charges, but receive a credit that's indexed to, I'm putting out one particular screen, but it's indexed to this credit rate.
So the, the credit is statutorily defined for the next 20 years?
That's correct.
And the credit comes right off of your CMP bill?
Correct. It will be applied to the, all, there's gonna be a certain volume of credits that we may need to spread across multiple bills.
So do you spread it out like equally over the year or something such as that?
Yeah, what we'll do is probably assign, you know, so we're gonna take an account like the high school. Let's say there, the cost at the high school are $100,000 per year. And we anticipate the credit rate at $13,000, or excuse me, $13, $13 cents a kilowatt hour. We're gonna, we're gonna apply the amount of credit that would probably be 80% of that $100,000, so that we're never developing a negative balance on that Central Maine Power.
Right.
Because if you develop a sen, a negative balance, they're not gonna write you a check. Those credits will expire after a year if you let them roll. And so part of our work is to be auditing that and making sure that you don't develop any negative balances.
Right.
So I, I don't know how I lost the, this, my understanding of this, but I understand the credit rating, but the pricing, is that the, the, the eight cents, is that fixed for the entire time?
Yep. So that'll be fixed with no escalator for the 20 years.
Thank you.
But this credit rate will float.
Right.
Essentially with the price of electricity. So if electricity prices go up, and I'll get to this as one of the risks of this, the concern often voiced is that, okay, well, if electricity prices drop by 40%, so now the credit rate is on par with what you're paying the developer, you know, there's potential for this deal to flip negative. But the, the, the way we see it, if electricity prices drop by 40%, your electricity prices have dropped by 40%, so it's a less of a cost that the schools have to pay, right?
And that's the number where, where we would have to take a loss, is 40%?
If costs dropped more than 40%, that's when the, you would be paying the developer more than you're receiving.
Going back to the expiring credits.
Yep.
So if the high school has a bunch of credits.
Yep.
Can those be moved across other accounts within our district, or are they always assigned to that one invoice?
Good question. They, once they're received on the bill, they cannot be transferred to other accounts. But they will roll for 12 months. They'll roll forward for 12 months.
And we would not be looking to buy 100% of our usage?
Yeah, we.
So we would be looking in a conservative way?
Yeah, we.
Nor, nor are we gonna apply 100% of what, of your utility liability to any one account. So there's kind of two levels to this. Subscription overall is gonna be a, a portion of your total costs, anticipating that if your costs, for whatever reason, drop down, we don't wanna be buying more credits than you can take.
Right.
And at the account level, we don't want to accrue credits that can't be pulled out. And, and that's something that we will monitor.
And we worked with them to come up with what seems to be a conservative estimate and takes into account the fact that we may be taking advantage of energy savings for changing out fixtures, so we become more energy efficient. Even the group that I just met with, we closed three schools and opened one, which is really efficient. We've taken all those types of things into consideration, such that we don't get into that lopsided kind of arrangement.
When you say we, Todd, who?
Charlie and, and the folks at Competitive Energy Services and I have talked. And they, they have painful detail of what we spend every year at each facility, because every year we bid out our electricity, they know exactly what our historical use has been.
And we also had a chance to connect Todd and I with one of our attorneys from Drummond and Woodson, and they're working with a few other school districts and organizations on this as well.
Has Kate, has Kate met as part of that process yet?
Not in this particular conversation, but I've been in on all of that.
Other ones.
Only really long email.
For me?
Yeah.
Wouldn't I, wouldn't I stand reading?
I understand two quarters of what you say most.
Well, Charlie's right. It's a complicated, it's complicated. If you don't live it every day like they do, it's complicated. And I can't say that you've answered my questions at least a dozen times over this process, because it just takes a while for, for you to absorb it and understand it fully. And it's, it's one of those things where I keep asking, and Charlie thankfully keeps answering. But it is complicated. And if you don't live it every day, it just feels cumbersome.
So, so the bottom line is that that 3,000 number that you have us down for is a conservative estimate of our usage?
Correct.
And that you don't think that anything that's coming down the pipe would put us under that?
That's right.
If I, I can get into the next slide here of. At the bottom of this slide, you know, I highlighted the total electric load annually for the, for the district at 4,900 megawatt hours or 4.9 million kilowatt hours per year. And we've started, our starting point for Scarborough, we're in the neighborhood of 65% of that. We've, we've, somebody could probably look up here on that. It's, we, we put in 3,000, 3 million kilowatt hours as your commitment to this project. So we, we, we agree that that's conservative. There's, you know, we, if you'd like, we could probably bump that up to, you know, 75% or so, if that was a.
Can it be moved after the agreement is initiated?
No.
So once we go in, that, that's what we get?
That's right. One of the reasons I've, I've been in favor of staying this more conservative route is that we have a lot of aging electrical fixtures in our district that simple conversions save you, you know, 60% of your electrical consumption. So if we were to, say, relamp the entire high school, which is a huge building, but if, let's just say, over the next five years, I change out every fixture to a high-frequency LED fixture, that's gonna make the electrical load at the high school go down significantly.
Gotcha.
And there are other ways to save energy, but that's just an example that we can all now look up and say, oh, there's a light, let's change it out, and we save 40% or whatever. So there's a lot of that work yet to be done.
Okay.
So, and then there's the prospect of a new school possibly down the road, and those tend to be more electrically efficient as well, so.
Thank you.
So just to speak to kind of the savings potential here, this, there's differential that I've described between the, kind of the 13 cents and the eight cents, I think is the best-case scenario, you know, over the life of this project, we're, I've, on this slide, we're being far better than you serve of projecting essentially two cents per kilowatt-hour savings, or $20 per kilowatt hour. And, you know, on the utility bill credits, that would equate to about $60,000 per year. But the actual numbers that I just shared to you would probably be more like double that. The difference between 13 cents and eight cents is about $50 a megawatt hour, so you can quickly do the math. You know, I've tried to be conservative with Todd this whole time to keep his excitement level down. But.
How'd that work out?
But, you know, but we're also trying to project over the 20 years of the agreement, you know, the worst-case scenario is that, really, literally the worst-case scenario is that energy prices drop, and then we're all paying less for electricity, which isn't the worst-case scenario. But we see this as a good hedge in the case that energy prices go up, the savings will continue to increase accordingly. In addition, you, I mentioned earlier that there are environmental claims and attributes that the district will own. The value of those is also stated pretty conservatively here. If you just did decide to sell those, you know, if you were selling them today, they'd be worth about $40 per megawatt hour. So that's additional revenue that you can give back to Todd for his relamping projects and, you know, other efficiency projects to help you reduce consumption. I think this sort of money is best applied to those types of.
I don't really understand that. So that, so if, if you, if we can sell the assets?
Attribute. This is a environmental attribute.
I don't, what is that?
Well, it's, it's a. Essentially, it's a, a claim to the carbon benefit of 1,000 kilowatt hours produced from a renewable energy system.
Claim for what? Taxes? I don't get, I still don't get it.
Say that again. Environmental attribute is?
Yep. So here in New England, we have, we are in a compliance marketplace for electricity. In other words, there's a certain amount of every electricity retailer's electricity sales that must come from renewables. This is a, this is a point that I haven't really gone through, so I apologize. But we have a renewable portfolio standard in Maine today. It's a state law that requires 40% of the electricity that you buy today to come from renewable energy.
Okay.
This is something that we heard from Governor Mills talk about just the other day. She's passed another law, LD 1494, that expands that 40% to 80% by 2030. So in the next 10 years, doing nothing, we will double the amount of renewable electricity that you get at home and in all of our businesses. That will double the amount of renewable electricity that everybody buys under that state law. Well, we have a lot of power plants that are natural gas-fired, so what is, what is it, there's nothing renewable about a gas-fired power plant. And for every kilowatt hour those guys sell, for every hundred of them they have to sell, they have to go out and buy 40, or maybe in 10 years, it'll be 80, renewable energy credits to offset their 100% fossil fuel electricity generation. Does that make sense? And, and there's a marketplace for these attributes, which are traded amongst people who generate them, the renewable energy projects, and the folks that need them to meet compliance obligations, which are the fossil fuel generators.
So what's the advantage to keeping them or selling them?
The, the advantage to keeping them is the school district can count those attributes towards your overall greenhouse gas emissions and your impact due to your operations.
Okay.
And electrical consumption.
So to offset your carbon footprint, and there's no monetary value?
You can make claims that, you know, Scarborough Schools is, you know, X percent, you know, renewable, or we've reduced our carbon inventory by X percent or X tons.
Okay.
And then the benefit of selling them is strictly financial.
Okay.
Who monitors all that?
Yeah, there's a governing body, the New England Power Pool that.
Get all those going down?
Yeah, all the credits get minted. It's like, you know, minting a coin, they go into this system and, you know, then they get traded and bought and sold. Yeah, this is the world I live in. But, yeah, for every kilowatt hour that's generator, excuse me, every megawatt hour, every thousand kilowatt hours that's generated from these systems, you will have one renewable energy credit. And based on your commitment here, we. And based on your commitment here, we, you'll have three thousand per year that you can either say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna say we're, we're that much greener. Or you can sell those and, like I said, Todd has plenty of places probably to put the money, you know, to go towards energy efficiency or other.
What's the ballpark that they sell for?
They're trading today at forty dollars. If you, if you were generating them today, forty dollars a megawatt hour.
Is that pretty consistent?
No, it's very driven by state poli, state, state policies. You know, the fact that we now have a, a policy that doubles the amount of required renewables over the next decade, that's gonna drive a whole lot of demand over that course of time for these attributes. And Maine is not alone. This is happening in other states in New England too. We're all competing for these same renewable energy credits. More than likely, we'd be selling them into Massachusetts or Rhode Island, who have the strongest markets for these credits.
Are the credits like? Do you get, do you get more? It's just like completely kilowatt hours? It's not like, do you get more credits for being wind?
No.
Than you do for, so if some like amazing energy source comes along that's like totally renewable, you would still get the, you would still own the same number of credits?
I, I mean, I, I'm not gonna say that any generation is gonna create a credit. I, I don't, I don't know what you envision. I mean, wind and solar. There, there are different categories. In other words, you know, like, like EcoMain, they produce renewable energy credits that burning trash. That's not treated the same as a solar renewable energy credit.
Okay.
So there are different categories. This is the purest.
The purest, right. Okay.
So big financial opportunity.
So Charlie, overall, based on the number of three thousand megawatt hours, and if we were to participate in this consortium in the first year, what could we look at for total savings if we cashed in our recs instead of patting ourselves on the back and saying we're green? What could the potential be for us?
Yeah. So, um, I, I've stated that the, the credit rate this year is thirteen cents a kilowatt hour. That's gonna change in 2021 when most of these projects come online. But if we use this as an example, thirteen cents, if that happens to be the credit rate next year too, we contract at eight cents, that's fifty dollars per megawatt hour, which would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in credits, utility credit savings per year. And then you would have another forty dollars per megawatt hour or another a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in rec revenue if prices were where they're at today. So, two seventy?
And when is your expected timeline in terms of setting that actual kilowatt cost?
Good question. So we are herding cats right now. You are cats and we have twenty-two other cats that we're making, we're trying to bring to the table and say, this is the time to commit. And, and it's gonna be over the course of the next, uh, ten days probably, where we're gonna, we're gonna drop a pile of paperwork on Todd's desk and say, it's time to go. But until then, we're still having confidential negotiations with these developers until the agreements are signed. There are, again, there are gonna be twenty-five different contracts. The, you know, we expect, as it is now and today, that, you know, there are, those contracts are gonna range from seven to nine and a half cents. And the weighted average is gonna be somewhere in the middle of that.
So it sounds as though we would need to take action at our next meeting based on that, that timeline.
Which is why I was sort of pushing this presentation because there is a time sensitivity to it. And I also wanted to allow you to have a period of time to ask questions, do additional research, maybe speak with our representatives at Drummond and Woodson to, to understand the ins and outs of the legal ramifications, et cetera. And normally, um, I sign an energy procurement contract for electricity on my own, either a one-year or a three-year contract. And, and there's none of this because that's the way we've always done it. This is a twenty-year arrangement. And it was bigger than I've, you know, taken part in before. And there, there are some differences in it.
Right.
But the potential, the reason I'm excited is that never in any of my solar conversations with Charlie in the last five years have we ever had an opportunity to save money. It's always been, yeah, you can do solar, but it's gonna cost you more than what you're buying it for. So why would you do that? And the answer is, you wouldn't at the municipal level. You might if you're LL Bean or Holy College, but we're municipal. So I'm always trying to save the money. And now that we have this opportunity, I'm excited.
I'm ready. First time in ten years. And as we did talk with, um, one of our attorneys at Drummond and Woodson, they are representing five other cats.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Or some.
And so, um, we could benefit by signing a joint, um, representation consent with Drummond and Woodson so that instead of being charged, um, fully for the rate that we pay as a district when we consult with them, we would share those consultation fees in this project with five other entities.
That's great.
So it'd be a savings.
Can I ask another question? The, 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 the companies that you're working with to produce the energy, what are they using to pay for the structures? They're building that cost out of their own?
Yeah, they are financing the projects. They're, they're gonna take contracts from you and, and all the others in this that are participating to a bank and essentially take your good credit and commitment for twenty years to buy all the offtake and use that to finance the development.
And so they're getting the, the what? The eight cents?
Yes, they're getting, say, the eight, eight and a half cents.
And that's enough for them to, like, that's the going rate for anybody doing that?
Yep. Well, I, yeah, I mean, again, we looked at, uh, a hundred and ten different projects.
Yeah.
Most of them were in the, you know, nine to eleven cent range. And then we were able to pick all the lowest-cost ones for this group. And, uh, so yeah, I think this is the best possible representation of cost, um, to build solar energy. And there is the possibility, I mean, one of the risks we have identified here is development risk. The most likely time these projects fail is while they're being constructed. Once they're up and running, and, and you had asked about this a while ago, once they're up and running, it doesn't really matter if the company goes under. The only way, you know, a bank is gonna take ownership of that project and the only way they're gonna pay, pay for it is to keep it running. It's not that complex. I mean, you have some inverters and panels need to be, you know, facing the sun. So there's not a lot of maintenance, but the development stage is the most critical. And that's why we think, we've hedged that risk by, you know, you, you guys aren't, you're not gonna have a binary result. It's not, we're in or we're out. It's, you're gonna have, you know, diversity across twenty-five different projects. And, and if any of them fail, um, we're gonna do our best to backfill them. And, uh, and if they do, and if we can't do that, your share may be a little bit less.
And if you look at this, this early slide with all the list of participants that are some of the cats, shall we say, compare us, we are actually one of the smaller.
We're small cats.
We're kittens.
Baby kitty.
Just having the time? We only have a few minutes left?
Yep.
So just wanted to.
I'm pretty much done, um, so any other questions?
I have a question for Todd. Has the town been involved in this at all or they?
They use a different, they use a different, uh, energy procurement company, so.
Will you see any benefits of partnering with them? I understand that there are timelines for this, which is basically, but I just, I'm just curious.
I don't know.
You don't know?
That's, the bottom line is I don't know. I can have a conversation with you offline afterwards that kind of tells you about my experience with, um, trying to work with the town. We're different entities. They're, they're a much smaller consumer. They don't have a high school consuming. So they're kind of rated a little differently. I would imagine that maybe over time there could be some benefit, but it's, given the fact that they're working with a different, uh, energy procurement company, it, it wouldn't be compatible, I guess, right now? If that's an easy way of answering it? And it's not for lack of trying, by the way. This guy's giving a lot of time to the town, uh, to try and bring them along with us and it just hasn't panned out.
Are there consortiums like this in other states? I mean, or, or other companies that do them? I mean.
None that I'm aware of that are doing this in Maine. We've, we've, uh, our company's based in Portland. We have thirty people in an office there. And we've been in the main market for twenty, or since two thousand and twenty, is our twentieth year.
Two thousand and twenty?
Uh, two thousand.
Oh. I was like, that's this year.
We've had a long.
You didn't set up like three weeks ago, right?
This is for thirty minutes. Could be our first time.
Just sign right here.
Yeah.
Anyway, we, we've been watching this for a very long time. We've actually followed similar legislation in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, where we've been working on these types of projects for the past six years. And then we have a, the, the head of our governor's energy office was hired out of Massachusetts and all of this legislation is, it's not a, it's a near mirror image of what happened in Massachusetts. And so we're experienced. We've, we've done this and we've built a team that supports the work.
Thank you very much for coming here.